Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Scottsville Planning Commission meeting. Today is Monday, February 6, 2023. My name is Matt Lawless. I serve as Scottsville's Town Administrator. This evening's meeting is held in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and the state's open meeting laws. We're meeting in person at the town office, 401 Valley Street in Scottsville. There are also opportunities for the public to participate and view the meeting online on Zoom and by calling in on the phone. If you're viewing this meeting in the future on our YouTube channel, thank you very much. The local time here now is nine minutes until seven o'clock, supposed start time for the meeting. We're still assembling our forum and setting up, so I will mute this recording. For now, you can skip ahead on the video, nine minutes, and you'll see the meeting come through. Thank you.
Good afternoon, good evening. It's February 6th. This is our first Planning Commission meeting of 2023. I'd like to call the meetings to order.
Angela?
Here.
Paul Fionn?
Here.
Johnson? Frisco?
Here.
And Dan, Mr. Stratsford, can you hear us?
Yes, here.
Could you just, for the record, for remote participation, just say your location, your reason, which I think from Luis's book was just medical leave for taking care of family, and then that's it.
Sure. I'm in Scottsville, Virginia, and I am not there in person because I didn't want to get anyone sick with my cold that I have.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
No problem.
Hi, Commissioner Stratsford.
Hi, Commissioner Angela Vine. Hi, Mr. Gritsco.
All right. The agenda, do we have agreements on this? I want to point out that we do have June minutes.
Yes, so just November.
Thank you. Six, six. Okay. Um. Yeah, I think that's it. Does anyone have anything else to say about the agenda? Motion?
Move that we move forward with the agenda.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion passes. Um, report unrelevant actions by town council. Now, I think all of us attended or know about the events of the last town council meeting where there was a vote on Bird Street, so you probably don't have to go into a lot of detail on that unless you have some more information about the whys, because I think that was a little unclear. And if you may, the facts first, and then opinion if you want.
No, the only thing I was going to say, I think you made a good point, was that I think it was clear, everybody meaning, everybody knows here that the vote went a certain way. I think you'd have to ask the town councils themselves. I think you'd have to specifically talk to each one of them and understand why they voted to go in. So I don't think it would be there for me to speak for them. I am sad, I don't think I was going to say, as a person, I was going to be very sad, but Councilboy stepped down, he was right, as one of the council and stepping down was very hurtful to me, having served in six years. Don't think those shoots will be easily filled. Let this sound about that. But Russ, I can't remember, honestly, Matt, you'd have to go with whatever else we tried to do.
We're getting into budget presentation that hasn't entered into town council workflow yet, but it will at their next work session leading up to a budget adoption hopefully in May. It impacts planning commission as related to budget for any consulting support that you may need. So that's relevant to the whole business comprehensive plan item. If there are funding requests that you want to carry forward to town council, this is a good time to scope those and make sure the council is aware of what, if any, assistance you've needed. In some years, that has been a zero budget line, and in other years, it's been substantial.
Okay, so we'll let's address that again when we get to number five.
The town council later in February is taking up two items that planning commission reported out a couple of months ago, and we paused on while working through the large zoning item. That's the special use permit for the Stanland on Hardware Street and the zoning amendment for the value property on Valley Street.
Okay.
So they've received your recommendations on both of those. Yeah, from the one and no one other, and we'll take those off when I can after.
Okay.
Do you want to say something, Matt, also about the events in March? Is that set yet or?
Oh, sure, sure. I've been thinking about that for the old business comprehensive plan. But town council has been interested and shared goal setting for the new year, and planning commission also had a real interest in aligning your vision for the town's future and the goals of the most important projects that you wanted to work on. In the past, the town has sought some outside facilitation for that, the visioning and team building skill not being as strong as the mine. And so we're proceeding with that again, and is it March 18th, a Saturday? I'd invite the commissioners to hold a couple of hours on Saturday, March 18th. We have some excellent professional help from the Virginia Institute of Government at EBA. One of their staff facilitators working with us today, and I think I'm not sure about the whole agenda yet, but probably half of the time, you have council and planning commission together, and half of the time, just council team building. So look for that agenda and event details later, but please save some time on Saturday, the 18th of March. If available, thank you. I think it will do a lot of good for the for the citizens of the bodies and the nation.
And just to follow up on that, Matt and I talked along with Mayor Smith last week about well, it started as a conversation for what our plans are for this year. What important things do we have to talk about? What goals have we wanted to tackle but haven't been able to because we had such a busy agenda last year and the year before? And then it morphed into, well, there might be some feelings of frustration because the last meeting, the last town council meeting with the the public hearing seemed that, I don't know, I guess my take on it is that it ended, there was just an effort to rush through it and not a whole lot of discussion on why it was being voted down. So we had voted to approve it and wanted to see some work on it to fill some of the gaps in it. But it just seemed like it got rushed through and voted down. So if we as a body are making one recommendation, we'd like to know that that is given its due weight. And so if we're going to be moving forward and what we're proposing gets shot down or doesn't get due consideration, that can be dispartening. So we'd like to understand what they want from us and have a little bit more cohesion. And Molly, you've talked about this in the past, having more of a connection, more of a working relationship. So this is, this is going to be an effort to do that and to really understand. We know what our goals are as a town. That's our comprehensive plan. We know what our goals are for the West Downtown, the small area plan. We have that, but seeing that through to fruition seems to be, there seems to be a little bit of a disconnect there. So we have important things coming up this year, and we'll talk more about that. But before we move forward with any clear agenda for the year, we need to know that we're going to be able to work together and what that's going to look like.
Well, I think there's been some miscommunication, not miscommunications, but some I don't know what you want to call it, like some mixed messages going out there. Like, yeah, I don't really think that that's the role of the planning commission. And yeah, you know, it's not really there for that. And like us wanting to have more of a cohesive, this was our research and decision doesn't have any weight on your research and decision. That's where the disconnect is, I believe. And maybe, yes, we all have a lot of written information about how things should be handled and who should be doing what. But I think there needs to be a little bit more checks and balances on what's going on with that. I think it's really important that we verbally talk about where our responsibility lies within these kinds of important decisions. You know, I don't think at this point in time, it's got a lot of weight, like our proposed, you know, our message to the town council was that we think this is a viable thing to do, and that it follows along with the conflict and doesn't kind of not check off the boxes. So how much weight should that have and doesn't have? I think that if you poll the town council, they might have a lot of different ideas about that. So if we're open and talking about where our decision-making lies, and what can we bring to the research that we're doing to make sure that it's a good plan for the town, maybe needs to be talked about. I think the comprehensive plan, when you read it, it talks about yeah, I think we should have some great things for the town, you know, and it's very vague. So it's up to us to kind of figure out what is going to check those boxes.
Right, and that's part of it too. So we could and one of the things that I asked Matt to start looking at is where we're at with the comprehensive plan right now and what still needs to be addressed so that we know how to proceed for the year. That's part of what we should be working on for the year. But we don't want to put a lot of effort into something just to know that it's not going to go anywhere or
Well, that we're not going to follow it. I think that there are things on the comprehensive plan that maybe put up some red flags about a project like what we just discussed. So there are some things that, you know, I think that we should have more workshops to pull us all together in knowing the comprehensive plan and what the small area plan means to the comprehensive plan. And if we need a PUD, because, you know, my understanding of a PUD is maybe not the same as someone else's. I'm not seeing a use for that, because someone else might be able to say to me, here's an example of what might come across our desk, and we want to give them the opportunity to kind of skip the bureaucracy, you know what I mean? Like, that's not exactly it. That's what's in my mind. So I think we can talk a little more amongst ourselves.
Those are, those are all great points. I don't think anything you said will be bad. I don't know, there was, I think everything is certainly helpful, and I think it's obvious between the two of you. You're both expressing concerns about how the council understands what the planning commission does, and I think that's helpful that you shared your thoughts, that you shared your thoughts. I think that's very helpful.
Okay, so keep that Saturday open, please. Matters from the public?
Can I copy of your goals? Can I have a copy of your goals in your comprehensive plan?
Do we have that available online?
I'll be happy to print you one, sir. You want, you do what? I'll be happy to print you one, of course.
Oh, I'd like to add, I know you yeah, I've already made my comments known before, but why would you advance the scan property as a zoning change when they're not, don't have any immediate plans to build anything, have no description of what they're going to build? And it's kind of awkward to to approve different zoning across from a cemetery when that kind of gives them an automatic get out of jail free card to build whatever they want. And I think that's wrong.
Well, they wouldn't be able to build whatever they want. They'd still have to come back to us for
But you know what I mean? It's, it's alone to make their app one of their it's just, why? There is no need to change the zoning for them to have an outdoor vehicle or whatever, probably paying up there, sitting in their actual chair. No, there's no valid reason to change that at this moment.
When's the hearing scheduled? Sorry, when's the hearing scheduled for that?
Tuesday, the 21st of this month.
I understand, but in other words, the objection was never noted in any minutes or anything that I know of.
The objection by you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But I think it's wrong. It doesn't follow normal, like when somebody comes with a purpose and a reason and some plans, you consider any, any going to work?
Well, they changed it to more of an educational.
Right, but there's nothing there other than grass.
Well, they do have plans to further the educational aspect.
I totally understand, but plans are like everything else, they change.
Okay.
I just say, I think we should advance the plan.
Small story. Yeah, I think they hoped to build there, but I don't think they came to do this.
That's, that's been a problem for a number of years.
Okay.
But it's. You need more substitutes before you push it forward to result.
Okay, will you? Well, we can certainly look into that before the hearing.
I appreciate it.
And address it then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, but I would recommend that you show up at the hearing to, or send an email if you can't attend that night so that something could be noted on the record with. Your, your point.
Thank you for sure.
I'm just a little confused. This is a public hearing. For the town council? That's right, sir. The planning commission reported their recommendation.
See, I'm, I'm saying, I think the planning commission should not afford a, a recommendation.
No.
Okay, noted. I, I don't think we had anyone speak out against it the night that we had our hearing.
I said something the last time.
Was it at the hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other matters from the public? Okay. Next, on the agenda, old business, comprehensive plan, process and twenty twenty-three goals. Um, Matt, can you give us an introduction in, in what we have, um? What we want to talk through?
Uh, I'll, I'll try that. You, um, you spoke already to the, um. Sort of the starting point of a baseline of the expectations with the town council. Um, in, among other things, in that goal setting exercise in March. We can talk about the importance of the comprehensive plan update project, how the comp plan does not have the force of law. But is our strongest information and advisory document for the legislative decisions that we make later about rezonings and special use permits and all. Those decisions should be informed by the comprehensive plan and there should be a, a logical line from the long range planning work that we do to every. Instant decision of hopefully this, this zoning decision moves us in the direction towards the vision that we share in our comp plan. That's how that long range planning is supposed to work.
Hmm.
So the, the comprehensive plan update, we're on our five year view for renewal now. It becomes a really important community organizing, research and vision setting activity. And the membership of this body has turned over entirely since the last time the planning commission did it. And almost the entire membership of town council. So when it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't bother me with so much to have an outcome like last month at town council. Because the membership of both bodies has changed. So the, the community is in a different place. Those plans. Necessarily get a little state. The guidance that was adopted in twenty eighteen is not as strong as, um. You know, as it was then. So the update is really important. And to, to go through a thorough process of listening to our community, assembling the latest data, including from the twenty twenty census, market data and so on. Uh, you've got a real estate market that's all over the place. So we want to document that. And try to set those goals for legislative decisions that we want to make, things like rezonings. But also community infrastructure improvements where we spend our money. There's also a very close connection between. The comprehensive plan and the budget, that if we're going to invest in the community, that those investments. Move us towards the place that we want to see for the community's future. Um. I will, we'll try to do this as economically as possible. And last year's, uh, meetings, we looked at a couple of consultant scopes, um. Small towns can and do pay a hundred thousand dollars for planning consultants to do a comp plan update. Um, Trudy at Scottsville's, uh, consultant budget for the comp plan ended up over a million for everything that they needed. Uh, we can't do that. Uh, Scottsville has done well in the past with intern work, um, and I think that would be appropriate for this coming summer semester as well. We're still earning dividends from the last graduate intern that we had, Chris Waring. He has, um, since finished his master's in urban and regional planning from VCU. Having grown up, uh, right, right here in Scottsville from a foresters family. So he cares a lot about the natural environment and sustainable development. He did the capstone for his graduate project on. Long range growth scenarios for Scottsville. He used what he knew about market data and growth forecasting and sort of three analytical frameworks for how this growth could be planned. Understanding that the demand is there, the demographic change is happening. If we. Arrange ourselves in different legislative and zoning frameworks will get different growth patterns. Um, I, I sat on his capstone defense committee in December and was very impressed. He has graduated with, uh, with high honors from VCU and is now gainfully employed as a planner, which is great to see. He wants to present the same kind of capstone presentation to us and I suggested that your next meeting, March sixth, would be a good time to do that. Um. It's, it's not binding on your work in any way, but I think it takes a good. Locally rooted view from somebody who grew up here, looking twenty and thirty years ahead at what might happen. And what power we have to control where this growth goes. So I think that's a really helpful starting point.
Great.
After that, uh, I, I did a little bit more work on scoping. The kinds of community involvement that, um, planning commission would like to see. Um, I'd like to check in on this with town council as well, what level of neighbor engage, engagement they think is helpful. We had spoken in our past meetings about three volunteer teams that might. Appeal to different, uh, neighbors' interests and. Break the work of the comprehensive plan into, um, pipelines that get us where we need to go. Uh, a data team, an outreach team, and a team focused on the document itself. That lines up. Pretty closely with what that moral county comp plan process is doing at a much higher level. They're, um. Involving many more volunteers striving for diversity across the county with the expertise, with the backgrounds of the folks involved. And are engaging them for partial commitments so that they don't have to see through the whole comp plan process, which is really involved and has a lot of meanings. I think we do well not overtaxing our volunteers and, and making them work through the whole process when that may not be to their interest.
Right, being able to utilize people's skills and, and interests and strengths and not just expecting one core group to follow the whole project through.
Exactly. Uh, so I, I like your, your suggestions from previous meetings of, um. Maybe you've got one group of volunteers who is focused on the numbers, um, trying to put our student, it's a graph together and make sure we have all the right facts in our plan. Um, another group that's more specifically focused with. Talking with neighbors and making sure that this plan really represents who we are and what we want and is legitimate that way. Activities from social media discussion to door knocking to pop up events at the farmer's market. We try to hear from as many people as we can. Um, if you do that upfront, I think it makes the final public hearing easier. And we've seen that with some of our past processes for good or bad.
Uh, I think it's important to get everyone invested in this because we saw a lot of misinformation out there that. Kind of swayed the votes of a lot of people and their thoughts, things that are pointing to truth.
Yeah.
Uh, were circulating and. causing dissension. So I think it's really great. That maybe we get some people involved that aren't right here on the surface, this room.
Absolutely.
But people who are not as. You know, engaged, but have some biases because of what they heard.
And, and you, you hope that in, you know, three years, when we have a, a controversial decision, folks will, will. Come and be concerned and we can point to the plan and say, remember you were involved in this and this is what we agreed we were going to do. And now here it is.
To their viewers and say, I was involved in this and it's not like you think. This is what it is. And I think that's really important. So that's right.
It's, it legitizes.
Did you say that we were going to try and decide how to get on and start? Um, recruiting now or after the March sixth meeting?
I, I think it, if, this might be a good time, if this framework. Means with your approval, um, to start asking around about that, um. Get in a field for what kinds of interest is out there. It's harder to get people engaged at the front end of a long range process than it is when the, the big decision is, is right in your face. But, but maybe. If you saw some neighbors who were involved in the past couple of months. To remind them, you know, it. If you want to change the plan. This is how you do it. Um, that goes important. So if, if, um, if that basic division makes sense, you might start asking around about it.
All right.
Um. Did you want to discuss any more about? Sort of a. The, the process by which we go about this? The one meeting a month isn't, isn't going to be enough.
No, no, and, and. Yes, we definitely need to get more into the nitty gritty on, um, how this is going to look and start mapping out the year. And what rule the different commissioners are going to take. Um, has Mr. Johnson logged in?
Wishing has made it so.
Yay. Wish that always worked. Um, so what I would say is. Folks, this is going to be a busy year. This is going to be a. Um, roll up your sleeves and, and dig in year. So, um. We have the different teams that we talked about that Matt, um, that. Which name? Mr. Law has talked about. Um, data outreach and working on the actual text of it. So we're going to need volunteers and we're going to need all of us to pick a committee, um. Pick a team to be on and. It's going to be. It's going to be a busy year. So I just want to make sure that. You, you commissioners think through what your strengths are, what you'd like to do and be sure that you're ready to get the work done. Because if you don't want to do this and you don't want to work. This year. Then this might be a good time to bow out and say, this just isn't for me. Um, but we need all hands on deck. We need attendance. We need, um. Reading through the materials, attending a meetings. I already said that, but it's that important. Um, and being prepared to contribute. We need engagement. We need engagement from all of us here on this panel, in this room and from the whole. Town and our neighbors. I'd like to definitely want to map out how the year is going to look, what the first steps are. And start picking people, start getting volunteers and. We need big communication. So whatever. Methods we have to communicate with people, social media, posters, if we have email addresses. Um, everyone who's attended our meetings in twenty twenty-two would be. Great to continue to keep them engaged. Um. And I have a couple of ideas for people that I've talked to that would be interested in participating more. I don't know if now's the time to start. Mapping that out, but what are your thoughts on how to proceed?
Oh, I was just going to say that I, I, I think that, I think the government service and the committee. Is working on this, but we are, it's very important that we start getting a. Mailing list together. And I think that one of their goals was to get the website. Together and have a functional signup for.
Mm-hmm.
Town events or town information. I think it would be a really important step. To have the community involved in that. So that can be part of the information, um, you know, with, with the different. Things that are going on with, with the official town, with the. Events and, and whatever else. Um, I don't think that here should have a sign up. When we have big community engagements here, they should be putting their name and their address and their. Email address. I think it's really important that we do that. Um, you all. Put out a communication to the town by mail. Um, I think that's a really, really important. That was the first time I had ever received anything. From the town saying, well, maybe not the first time. I don't really remember, but the first time in a really long time. That I had gotten something that had to do with one of the decisions that were being made about zoning and, and things of that nature. So I, I don't see any reason why we don't. Include that, um, in our outreach. Um. I think that we need to reach out and we're not doing that in any effective way.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Well, I mean, I think a mailing is probably pretty expensive. If you think fifty cents per.
I don't know what to say about that, except for that, you know, there are bound to be some ways that we can, um. I don't know much about the mailing, but I know there are different. Variations of how we can send out mail, classifications and that kind of thing.
A mailing to every property owner in town is cheaper than a newspaper ad and probably works better.
Yeah. Yeah. Now, we know that Scottsville does not include just the people who live in Scottsville. We're very much aware. That there are a lot of people that are highly involved in this process that are not. You know, living in the proper, but it's, uh, it's important to start somewhere. Uh, I just want to say that. We can't wait forever. We have to get one in. So even if we can put something functional on the website as it is right now. Something that says, do you want information about what's going on? Of course, that's going to need some maintaining and need some. You know. Ways to use that, some, you know, maybe staff time. To, to do those kinds of things. So it's something to think about, but hopefully you all are. Getting the interns together. To come in and help you with your, your office. And taking the burden off of you guys. So.
And how much funding would we need to? Make this happen? Should we have, um, a facilitator for, for the work groups? Could an intern do that? I'm sure some work groups and intern could, could do because we've done that in the past.
I thi- I think so. And that's especially for graduate planning students, that. Community engagement element is, is. Kind of the hot topic, you know, more so than some of the older. Mapping focused approaches that, that, um. Equity and legitimacy part. Is a lot more prominent in what they learn. So I think if we, if we put that forward in what we were recruiting for, we'd have good interest.
Great.
It's as much about talking to people as it is, um. Calculating the goal.
Um, we probably need someone like Maxie Brown to help with the text, maybe. Or no, we did that on a run with the small library plan. Okay. Okay, all right. So do we need a big budget? I mean, maybe some for mailing, some freshmen's.
Mapping visuals in the, in the last plan we paid the regional planning district commission, just a little bit to, um, to edit the maps. Uh, that's, that's probably time well spent. Uh, but maybe also, maybe also within intern skills. Um, the GIS map, everything. The old versions of the files live with the regional planning district commission. So it would probably be simpler to. Get back up with them and update what they did five years ago.
Didn't we just update maps? Last year?
We did, uh, but to actually, um. Produce the digital map file and have you go back to them and ask their favor to. Make what we voted on.
Okay.
But, um. If, if the. If the, you know, guidance from council is to get this done within a five thousand dollar interim budget.
Hmm.
We can make that work and that would be more of a volunteer effort.
One of the things Matt has already been sharing with the council that we're going to talk about in probably weeks is. A little bit of belt tightening, so to speak, related to the budget going into next year and. The idea of doing it in a. Least expensive way, I think is important, but we're just not going to have the money to do an expensive version of it.
Mm-hmm.
I, I should say, it appears that way, though. That'll be conversations we have as town councillors, but. It is clear that. There's, if not here, there's lots of action or something going into next year.
Hey, if we're going in, let's do it.
Okay, so what's the next step?
Well, we talked about going, are you talking about covering some plan? We talked about the ones that should be sectioned. I'm not really sure that that got us. Rolling. Um, reviewing each section one by one and.
Mm-hmm, we talked about doing that amongst ourselves, yes.
I think we also talked about the fact that we can look outside the box and find a different way of looking at. I don't know, you know. I just thought I'd mention.
Different way of.
Maybe instructing it or outlining it.
Okay, for, so the finished product that gets released, making it a little bit more creative and. Yeah, like that big overhaul that we did with the west downtown small area plan, how that, that really got cleaned up and became a lot more user friendly.
I know that it would be really hard to recreate the wheel or anything, but I think that if we're looking at a dysfunctional document, it's important that we. Start trying to repair that.
Well, I think in the last month, I spent a handful of. Here plans.
here plans. Did that, did that get to?
Other committees.
They, they ranged in length from seventeen to two hundred pages. And they looked very different. Um, but those were comparable small towns, um, to us in kind of size and territory. That might be a good place to start.
I think two hundred pages is a little much, especially if we're trying to follow that kind of thing or review it.
Yeah. Yeah, I've heard, I've heard nothing, but all the feedback about style that I've heard on this have been short, visual, clear. If you really know what your goals are, you don't have to make it fluffy.
Can we get, I don't know when the website's going to be rolled out, but would we be able to plan a commission, get a tab or page on there where we can talk about what we've been working on so people can actually see it?
Sure.
And if it's rolled out in time for the comprehensive plan that we're working on, it'd be nice to do something like what Almaral County is doing and Nelson County is doing, where you can see the progress and they're kinda showing you a bar graph, like we're at twenty-five percent on this, we're at fifteen percent on this. So I thought that was pretty neat. Cause there's always that person that doesn't know what's going on. And when they do finally log into the website to check it out, they'll be like, oh, this is, I need to get, I need to start paying attention. There's stuff going on here. I thought I saw an email about that. Let me pay attention.
I have to say, where I keep saying, I know government services is working on the website. I, I just think that the website now as it is is really hard to follow.
I mean, yeah.
Really hard to find meeting information. It's hard to see the, how under doesn't really, isn't really value added. Um, you know, there, there's some just join in sections in there. And I appreciate everything you guys do, but I think it's been impossible because it's not really always up to date. And so I, I don't mean to be critical. I am so glad to help wherever needed, but I will give the feedback that it's very difficult to just jump on and find something. Um, so I hope that they're, you know, I know that they're hoping to have someone recreate.
It's, it's out to do it now.
Okay.
Um, and we'll, um, this time next month, we will probably have, uh, uh, a partner on it to, to do that work.
Okay. I just don't think it should be second guessed. I think it's a really important tool, especially if we're gonna put a face out there as a tourist town or a destination of any kind, um, and I don't know if the chamber is working on something like that or, or whatever. It's just what's missing.
Yeah.
So, you know, um, Commissioner Angeline, one thing that you said, should, we should talk about that a little bit further. We talked about us as the commissioners going through with a fine-toothed comb and saying, yes, we did this, no, we didn't do this. Is this, does this seem to be relevant still? So we, we still need to talk about that component.
That's fine.
Um.
I, I totally agree. And I'm, I'm glad to do it that way. I just wanted to point out that we, it just was kind of a nonstarter, but it's probably because of all the, you know, extra items on the agenda that we had this year.
Oh, yeah, we, we definitely had a very busy October, November.
I wasn't trying to be critical, I was just trying to say that maybe section by section, one where we kind of recreate a more cohesive, um, understandable comp plan, but you're right, we need to decide whether any of these goals have been met. So, and you did a lot of work to put that together.
Yeah.
In giving us an idea of what you thought where we had come.
I think that would be very helpful for the, the joint, uh, day meeting with town council to, to point to a hundred and some, whatever it was, goal statements in the comprehensive plan that don't have a high level of public awareness and many of them don't have budget resources attached to them. Some of them just happen on their own and some of them have interaction. So to point that out, that if you have, you have a hundred priorities, you don't have any priorities. And that might be a good starting point for what is really most important to us. Either pull some of those things out and say, yeah, these really are important for the next five years, or, or get rid of ones that we just don't care about.
Also bringing ideas to special meetings, because we're not gonna be able to do it one meeting a month. So we might as well start having special meetings to talk about, um, you know, uh, trying to come up with ideas and, and
For sure. A hundred percent. Um, so, I mean, I'd like to start jumping in. I kinda need a little help figuring out what the next step is. So just so we could, we could start divvying this up like we talked about and take it from there, and that could be our next meeting. Um.
Can I interject?
Please, yes.
Um, I was thinking maybe it would be helpful for the next meeting in March prior to the get together with town council that we all of us individually could take a look at it and see, um, what's been met and what hasn't been met so far. Um, and what still needs work and, and have notes ready for that, that meeting with them to say, are these still the goals that matter to us as a town?
Well, can we?
And then after.
I'm so sorry, please continue.
Oh, and the why, I was just gonna say, maybe then we could get together as a special session in March um, after that meeting and discuss where we wanna go from there.
So I think that's a great idea. How about we at our next meeting in March, come in prepared to talk about that amongst ourselves and then have come up with a better focus. Okay, cool. Um, do we know?
Great vacation in March, so that's gonna take up some time.
Yeah, so what is, do we know what March, the agenda looks like? I, I guess we have to still get to, we have the zoning, we have
There'll be, there'll be one substantial application, I think, um, and you, you may, you may report out, you're running your business here. But, um, Mr. Waring's item, probably twenty or thirty minutes. If you did twenty minutes on goals reviewed together, you would still have solid, um, hour and quarter for, um, regular business. And kind of split your meeting up in half between business as usual and comp plan and try to, you know, imagine you've got two hour meetings usually and half of it be regular business and half of it would be long range.
I'm thinking we need a special meeting.
Okay.
I think we need one in February.
Yeah. Yeah, I think I'd like to have one in February and then maybe use the remaining hour of our March meeting for wrapping that up and putting a neat bow on it and then presenting it to council on that Saturday.
That'd be very helpful.
I'm confused. You're, what are we, what would we present if we talked about that in a minute?
Well, so we need to have a, a conversation about our goals as a town and what we're working on for the year, because we know what we're supposed to be working on. It's in the comp plan. But we don't wanna work on something just to be told, no, we don't like that goal after all. So we'd like to have a, a conversation about where we're at thus far on the comp plan. So us as commissioners should spend some time along with the email that Matt put together for us going over the goals and the objectives and the strategies that were raised in the comp plan five years ago, seeing where we're at with them, if it's still relevant, if it is something that is attainable and if we want to perhaps start working on it. And then so each of us take a section of that and then bring it to town council and say, okay, this is our recap of what the current state of the comp plan is. What, let, and then let's have a conversation about our goals for this year as well as direction for the comp plan.
Okay, then.
So section B is land use. Section C is historic scenic and natural resources. D is economic development. E, the developed community. Um.
I'm gonna be dealing with the comp plan myself right now.
To the sections of the goals.
Okay.
Coming up with, um, uh, methods for divvying it up.
Gotcha.
Also, the list of goals by itself is fourteen pages.
So, okay, looking at the table of contents, because the paperwork that I was looking at is already deconstructed. Um, so A, B, C, D, E, under objectives and implementation, implementation strategies. That's probably what we need to look at, right? Um, also three, section three, implementation guidance, future land use plan. I mean, that's, that's important too. So what do you say we break that up? Those two parts.
That's five elements, yeah.
Okay. All right. So looking at that table of contents, does anyone see something that pops out at them as far as what their interests are? Land use, historic scenic and natural resources, economic development, the developed community, and then future land use plan. I can go with any, no?
I can take section C.
Okay, sounds good.
I can go with, uh, section E.
Okay, thank you.
Economic development. Does that speak to you?
They all do, but I'm not even telling you the choices.
Well, yeah, thanks so much. Which one you want, I don't care.
Um, well, we have land use, we have economic development and future land use. I'm okay with future land use. That seems big, it's got six subsections. Okay. Okay, so then land use goes to Commissioner Britt's government. All right. So again, what we're doing is we're looking through these, reading through them in the context of the whole entire plan. And then making um, distilling some points that we wanna bring back to the group about where we're at with them and, and if it seems like something that we've done work on, also refer to Matt's email. I don't remember when you sent that. Was it January? Okay, December, it was a while ago. I just printed it. I didn't make a note of when it came in. But he did go through it for us and already start making comments on our progress.
It's about the January twenty-third.
That sounds about right, um, where, where I could recall staff work on the topic or if it wasn't something the town controlled, maybe who did it, but.
Okay, was it the twenty eighteen comp plan? Goal progress?
Yes, that sounds like a good subject line. Thank you.
Okay, very good.
So, yeah, your, your thoughts about whether those goals are germane or if you've seen work on it that I didn't submit, that's great.
Sorry, Matt, did you say you sent that in an email on January twenty-third?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we'll just put a nice neat bow on it for town council and say, this is what, these are our observations thus far, and we'd like to proceed with work on this as well as simultaneously working on the future comp plan.
Well, that's very helpful.
Okay, good. Um, and in the meantime, should we be issuing some sort of press release, for lack of a better word, about a request for volunteers and what the comp plan looks like, that process and?
I'll, I'll formally post that, um, and I like the idea of sending a note to people who have shown up and been involved in other ways recently. Um, the invitation counts for a lot, uh, so between, between the publication and email, that, that'll get some. But the, the most valuable is probably from y'all to your neighbors that you're embarking on something important and you, uh, you would appreciate their help.
Okay.
That personal ask works better than anything else.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anything inappropriate about asking for people to sign in when they come to meetings? So that we have an idea of the people who are really interested in what's going on in town government and things like that.
It's worth a try.
Well, I'm just curious, because I think that it does take a little bit of direction from us. It's not inappropriate. I'd love to ask people to please sign in.
But thank you for coming. We have a newsletter. Please sign up since you're, since you're here.
Yeah.
An email list.
Yeah, I just, I think there's, there's a lot to be said for, you know, people are used to getting their email address. They're used to getting the information that way. Uh, and I'll see why we don't share that and get people involved.
Will the new website have an opportunity to, for people to sign up for a mailing list? Okay, cool.
It's a pretty basic function.
That will be.
But that was something that we're specifically working on, government services is putting together, uh, website. So, well, town council is getting together.
Okay, I feel good about this. Does, does anyone have anything else to add?
Did we make a meeting for February or we go to March?
We do have to come up with a meeting for February. Um, but let's, let's, let's stress that towards the end, because we just lost a commissioner when we'll see about that at the end. So a February meeting and then the next March meeting also is I think the sixth. Okay, new business zoning text amendment, home stays.
Ms. Brown, Senator, regrets on this one. She, she worked this up and I really appreciate it, but she is double booked at another governing body this evening, um, thing about Monday evenings. Um, she presents a, um, a staff report and a draft zoning text amendment for the topic of home stays. This is something the town council requested last year, um, basically related to their workload and a not large number of special use permit requests that were coming in for, um, Airbnb type lodging uses. Some of them were controversial and some of them were not. Council is trying to basically distinguish between the two and make, make an easier path to the ones that they thought were less controversial and a special use permit be a, a tougher road for the ones where that was necessary. So in planning commission discussion on it, we, we homed in on this, uh, like a difference in term, a home stay that, um, if someone has an extra bedroom in the home that they live in and they choose to rent that out, that's different than an entire home being left vacant and converted to commercial use. And gets at some of the issues of oversight and onsite management and the nuisances that may go with that. Um, and the preservation versus for loss of our housing fund as homes be converted into tourist lodges. Um, so the, um, uh, the review of uh, peer communities showed that many of them do have these home stay regulations and planning commission responded favorably to that. So the draft was booked. So, the draft was before you incorporates that and adds a new definition for a home stay, which is different from a bed and breakfast or a hotel or tourist lodgings, which are trends that we already had. The home stay is that accepted or secondary use of a residential dwelling and a portion of it by a property owner to provide space for rent. The property owner shall reside on the premises, such accessory, you shall not create a landlord-tenant relationship, it's only for those short-term lodgings. It's not the same as a subsidies, that's its own normal ways. So, those are, the home stay would be by right in our residential and commercial sections. If you have the right to live there and you have an extra bedroom, then you have the right to take on guests in this way. It does require a couple of basic health and safety checks, in addition to the business license on the tax page. There's a fire official check and a health department check, that the facilities be sanitary and that they have basic fire safety insurance. Neither of those inspections are conducted by me, there are outside specialists who work on the health department and the fire safety checks. The town does work on the business license and taxation part of it. Ms. Brown's staff report goes into a bit more detail about the process and the intent, and the the commentary on housing affordability, which was one of town council's serious concern of feeling that it would not significantly affect affordability, because these are existing bedrooms, and we're not displacing any residents. The only choice that a property owner might face is, do they want to have that second bedroom for for tourists, or might they want to sublease and get a roommate?
How about you just have a second bedroom for tourists, wouldn't that just be an Airbnb?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So, in, in, in some Airbnbs, you rent the whole place, and in some, you just get a suite or a apart. Now, we understand there's a difference in popularity of gas, and the whole house rentals has become more popular in recent years, so it's, it's very possible that this is not heavily used. But it does create a regulatory difference between a whole house rental, which we think faces stricter scrutiny, and a home stay, which would be by right. So, feel, feel free to discuss, and we can continue staff work, or if you feel like this is ready for public hearing, that could be your next step.
So, do you know what it takes to get a town fire official to visit, or the Department of Health Bureau of Tourist Establishment Sanitation, do you know what it takes to get them to visit?
I, I know how to notify them, I do not know how busy they are, or much about what the content of those inspections is.
Um. I don't know, I just don't understand why we need that if we're not requiring that for the short-term rentals that are not regulated under home stay.
Might be a deficiency in our current process. Assuring things like, you know, safe emergency, you aggress from the windows, and fire extinguisher is in the right place, or that the well-insepted capacity is adequate for the number of people. Those are, those are things that Ms. Brown pointed out are inspected in different places, and if that's a shortcoming in our process now, maybe I ought to go back into that, too.
That's that's a question. Wouldn't, wouldn't you want to put stipulations, like Matt said, the window sizes and different stipulations, go ahead and spell it out for the people before they ever even ask for it, so they know all the rules they have to inform to before they waste your time saying, yes, I want to do this, and then, no, they can't do it because they don't meet criteria.
Mm-hmm, agreed, it's always nicer to help people understand what's necessary beforehand.
Be some good follow-ups, I can probably get the templates from those agencies and talk with the folks who'll be doing the inspections. They, they may have been doing them on their own, but I haven't gotten those briefings from them about what they look for, but I don't know.
I mean, we have a lot of old houses, so are we going to start saying you need to have windows that are a certain size and things like that, that sounds like um.
It's, it's real hard for rentals.
So, are we requiring, thank, thank you for your input, that I'd like to those public to refrain from commenting. Are we requiring that houses meet updated building codes in order to qualify for this? I don't think that's fair. I don't think we should require people make major renovations to their houses.
I don't know what the historic code exemptions might be, they do exist for some things, but like if, if your guest room windows were, you know, painted and sealed shut to where they weren't serviceable, there might be a, there might be a problem there.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely building code about windows being operational, and I think that's a requirement in every bedroom regardless of, or in every room, rather, regardless of when the building was constructed, but um. Yeah, I mean, I think this is the idea is this is supposed to be an easier way for kind of common sense ones to become by right, common sense examples to become by right, but we're putting a lot more restrictions on this than we put on, you know, long-term rentals and, and even the short-term rentals, so, I don't know, um.
But I'd be glad to follow up on that with, with our planning consultant and with our town attorney, that, you know, as we, as we permit these uses what health and safety assurances do we need to see first, so that we're not creating hazard? You know, it's one thing to say, you know, it's the fire marshal's problem, they'll, they'll find it, but if we, if we permit something that we know is unsafe, we're probably in trouble. And I don't know if, you know, ignoring the informations would be enough.
Okay, yeah.
It almost seems that there should be a lower bar on this if a homeowner is already living in the home.
Right.
So, okay. I mean, obviously, I don't want anything that's unsafe, but um, I also don't want to to kind of confusing, like, why would we be so heavily regulating this?
I understand that the intent from, from both bodies was to, to make this simple, and have it be, you know, as, as simple as taking a tenant for subleasing, so I'll share that back, and you know, assure that we're there's a, there's a minimum of safety that we may be responsible for, but not to burden the property owner in.
I also think that I mean, if, if this is a home stay, it's short-term, and some of it's going to be regulated by the market. It's not like this is a long-term, where someone's kind of living in, which we've seen on Valley Street, people living in hazardous conditions, with their landlords not taking care of things.
If it's poorly reviewed, and because it's a poor quality, it won't.
And if you're advertising on sites like Airbnb, they ask you to state whether you have smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors, so that stuff should be publicly available to folks going through those platforms.
That's true, the booking agency requires some of those things from the host for that reason, that they not, you know, send one of their clients into a place that's unsafe.
Any other thoughts on this?
I would like to keep working on that.
Okay.
Good questions.
Is the, and another question about the Department of Health, is the purpose of that for water, or is the purpose of that for, like, instructing kitchens and bathrooms? What is that?
I think, I think it's a bit of both, that water, water and sewer is one, kitchen safety is another, and there may be some kind of limitations that are going to do. I'm not sure.
Okay, I'm curious, okay, thank you.
I have a question about the home stays along the lines of what you were saying. If, are we trying, are we with this, with this zoning text amendment, are we trying to state that if you are living on the property and you're trying to run out of bedroom, that you wouldn't have to apply for a special use permit, you could just, that is your by right use?
Exactly, that the, the owner occupied, this is my extra bedroom, or this is my guest cottage, that that should be easier than if a whole property is being converted.
Right, so could we just strike section five point four? That seemed over the top to me, too.
Possibly, I'll, I'll take a look.
Okay. Thank you for that. Next item, upcoming subdivision review, East Village, all right, here we go. Getting ready to roll up your sleeves. Ready for you.
I, I cranked it off a few sets of our subdivision ordinance. Like the comprehensive plan, it's a, it's a long bit of law, which, in this particular case, the, the planning commission has not used but so much. We had one subdivision review that we worked on last summer, you'll remember, for the thirty-six first street houses. After the rezoning stage that defined the property rights for that project, the next step in development was to divide the one large property into the thirty-six lots per the rezoning. Subdivisions can also be done without the rezoning stage, just using the existing zone. So, you saw how we worked through that checklist with the applicants engineer, we went through this ordinance together and compared it to what was on their blueprints and their construction documents, and planning commission took a vote that, yes, the subdivision with the arrangement of the lots as shown complied with all of our subdivision standards and the town zoning ordinance. I got a heads up from an engineering team called Line and Grade, which is a different firm from some ship engineering who did the other one, formally inquiring and scheduling the meeting for this East Village project, which is the roughly hundred and fifty acres fronting Blenheim and Alabama Springs Road, and going down south, there's a clear portion and a wooded portion that goes down to Van Cleef-Mittray area. This is formerly Virginia Land Company property, which is under contract to Southern Village Homes. The property has split zoning, about fifty acres being village residential, and about a hundred acres being rural areas. The request related to by right development of that large parcel. Being about a hundred and fifty acres, that means the by right property rights of between forty-five and fifty-five lots for houses, depending how they're drawn with the access and all. I haven't seen the formal submission or the full arrangement of the houses yet. This will be an important, important, big subdivision review, and probably also have a lot of public attention. And so, I want to explain upfront on it, remembering the difference between by right and the other rezoning type of applications that we've got. There is no rezoning application in this project, they're using the existing property rights for both the village residential and the RA. The village part allows smaller lots, the RA has fewer divisions and larger lots, with the idea of preserving the watershed and the hills and terrain that are in that site. This is consistent with the comprehensive plan of course, it calls for the, you know, gradual environmentally preserved development of that site. And it's important to remember in the by right use, these are the basic property rights that go with that land. At, when there's just a subdivision review stage, nothing goes to town council, there's no legislative action changing the property rights on the land, they're working with the existing rights. So, instead of legislative, planning commission instead of acting what's called a ministerial role, where you help me administer this ordinance, work through the checklist together, make sure that everything in the subdivision plan is there. We don't have that submission yet, I know they're working on it, they've scheduled the pre-application meeting with staff later in the month that they're allowed to do. If they stick to their schedule, you'll have this as new business in March, but I want to give it to you as a heads up now, to talk through a little bit of what's in the subdivision ordinance. Give this ordinance as suggested homework, so you know what you're going to be looking at when it, when it comes in, and to publicly put out there that this is, it's coming, being clear the difference between by right and by application, kind of property rights and development.
And why are they submitting this?
Because they can.
Because they're just wanting to review what they would be looking at?
They're, they're required to because it's a subdivision.
Gotcha.
And that's, and that's when our responsibility of rolling up our sleeves and dissecting the law, the ordinance, making sure that they have everything where they, where, we tell them it has to be, so this is this is us laying out exactly what they have to do, so now us commissioners will get the plat and will get the design, the same way we did with Tiger Fuel and we did with the thirty-six houses on Blenheim. On, um, bird, we will say, okay, yes, this, this checks off that box, and or this setback is not far enough, we need you to evaluate this, so this is kind of the tedious part, perhaps, for some of us.
Yeah, and I'm glad to hear that it's going to be, you know, distinguished from a by right, because I think that by right is just, I'm just going to do my thing.
Yeah, well.
No, this isn't by right.
Yeah, I know, that's why I'm asking.
You, you, in the by right world, you still can't build whatever you want anymore, we still have these standards about how big the road is, and what shape the lots are, and how they touch the, and where the water lines go, and that's, that's sixty pages worth of extensive, so even in the by right, it still matters how the lots are arranged around the street. But that, that basic number, forty-five to fifty-five, is not up for debate.
So, when you went through the description of where this was, that was pretty fast. And so, okay, you're pointing to the long round area, you're talking about.
Sorry, it, it surrounds the Pollock Townhouses, it has frontage on Blenheim Road and now Blenheim Springs Road. There's about fifty acres of clear hillside, that's like a field and a flatter, and then about a hundred acres that's wooded coming down with, with poorer access touching Van Cleef-Mittray area.
Okay.
There's a sewer line trail that skirts the edge of this property that the public views as now.
And will, will maintain that easement.
I don't know.
And so, in relation to, let's say, Men Creek? Is that north of Men Creek?
The, the headwaters of the creek come up through here this way.
Yeah, but the, the Southern Homes has.
The Men Creek Estates.
Oh, those are over here, I didn't change this.
So, this is not inclusive of that, that's already been subdivided.
No, it's not, I just wanted to know in relation to that, where that was.
So, they have, they have their twenty-eight lots here, and this is on the other side of that.
Okay.
I didn't hear them say anything about disposing of these in any kind of way.
Okay. Thank you for answering my question.
Sure, sure. I'm sure some of the public discussion will relate to what the business plan is and how feasible this construction is, I don't know anything about that. Back in two thousand and six or so, these twenty-eight lots were planted by the same process, and then nothing was ever done. So, I, I can't really tell you anything about how real this is, except that real engineers are being paid to do the work.
So, we as a commission, again, this is by right, so we can't say, no, you can't do this, we can say, well, you don't meet these criteria, you need to move this and back this up, but we you know, if you like the idea of maintaining some green space, if you like the idea of the walking trails that we've talked about a lot, um. We have the opportunity to approach the developer. We have the opportunity to approach the developer and say. Well. We, we know that you've got some development by right, but we have these areas that we'd like to maintain, be because they connect with the Van Cleve. Or maybe because they connect with the scan land. Um, the sewer easement. Would you consider some more density in one section to free up some more green space in another? So we, we could have those conversations, I don't know. It would then move it into the special use permit process, right? Which will then, who knows, maybe, maybe it'll be met with some. Concern or maybe not, maybe the idea that, again, we've talked about the Emerald Necklace, we've talked about walking trails. Do we wanna put? You know, or, or. I don't know what the correct figure of speeches, but do we wanna back that up and, and really try to make that happen? Cause we, you know, we do think that that's valuable, maintaining those spaces, then now's the time to speak up.
The one, one thing I was trying to say about it. I think you're correct, that if we wanted. To have input, we would be in the special use realm, and it's probably would make sense. In March, when the town council is gathered for the planning session. To s- to feel out what the council is interested in, I. Think that process would be helpful so that it would help of. Our process and theirs to understand. Their willingness to do something like that, again, I don't know whether they would be, I mean, I'm on council, but I don't know whether the council would or wouldn't be. Interested, but our ability to influence it would be under special use, but not be under by right.
I think that would be a perfect opportunity for us to come together on a project and. Really get an idea of what everyone is hoping for and what everyone thinks is going to challenge, so.
Well, but I would say that. I mean, if they've already got engineers out there, putting real money into this, then we need to start. Having conversations about this sooner, you know, rather than later, so March would probably be the latest that. I, I mean, I don't, I don't know. If they're gonna bring it to us in March, then it would be nice if we could definitely have some sort of conversation before then, or.
Well, we've been talking about having a February meeting, it doesn't have to be all about one day, of course. In concert, they. And oh, together pretty well. Talking about comp plan and. This discussion.
Well, also, can you talk with council at? When's the, the next meeting, is the um, is it the work session?
They work session.
So is that an appropriate time, or?
Sure.
Okay.
I won't be there for that one, so I'll have to have somebody, Matt, if maybe you could present. Sure, I'll, I'll report from this meeting, what would you like me to share?
Um.
Idea of coming together.
Feeling them out to see if they would be interested in maintaining some green space and trails. Would you like someone from planning commission to be there, I could be there.
Good. Thank you.
Um, you know, I. I don't know if they'd be interested in, in it or not, but it. We've just talked about it a lot, how valuable, and it's, that, that space is valuable to me, I spent a lot of time back there. Traipsing on someone else's property, um. It'd be nice if it wasn't. In my capacity as a planning commissioner. Well, I mean, there's, there's trails and there's, we do have that easement. Um, it would be nice to keep that, that it's, I don't know how else to say it, that land is really important to me, so I like having it, and. Again, we've talked about connectivity, we've talked about, it's in the comp plan, it's one of the first things you see in the comp plan. Um.
I, I could give a very rough sketch of what it might look like, you know, do it in pencil and, and show the lots. And, and share as an exhibit, you know, this is basically what the by right pattern looks like. And the council feels like that's, you know, the best use of the space, and we get that guidance, then that's good to share versus. We might be willing to accept the trade off of a little bit more density in order of the physical space, some assets of parts and kills at that. Which. Sorry.
I was just gonna say, so when do you think we'd like these scenes something from a show?
Uh, I, I told them that I, I needed to have it by um. Like ten days before your meeting in order to do the staff work to evaluate it, so. I would, I would hope for a submission by the twenty third or twenty fourth. So that I could work on it in advance of your next meeting. Um. If it, if it comes later than that, I wouldn't be so well prepared for your next meeting.
There you go, and that, and that just doesn't seem to me like that's the right answer, you know, not your answer, but just like. Is ten days enough, you know what I'm saying?
Well, that's for him to put his staff report together for us to have a presentation from him.
Yeah, you, you'll need, you, you're allowed three months to work through this, you know, no problem, so they'll all just be getting into the. Starting to check the boxes of how to navigate what they speak.
Yeah, I was just talking about what you told them, is what was gonna be important for you to receive some sort of plan from them two days.
Well, he's just giving them a heads up, like if you want the planning commission to have it in March, I need it ten days before, so I need it on February twenty third, they can give it to us in April.
Alright, thank you.
We're in.
Okay, um. About to say something else on that, okay, so homework, subdivision. This is gonna be your friend over the next month. Matt, do you just have those in hard copy?
Um, I can, I can. Put the link in the chat, but I did print you off some copies, if you wanna stop by when you're feeling well. I said, say these ready papers are ready.
Okay, thank you. Okay, recommendation on Bird Street sidewalk project. Oh, yes.
Okay.
The traffic and the.
Um, this was then um. Follow up to some of the um, discussion regarding the factory project. We talked a lot about um, this, the state. And affected traffic pattern moving into this site. Um, whether it was the by right or the permitted development. And it surfaced a lot of community concern about existing problems and the traffic pattern there at Bird Street and. Connectivity on these neighborhood streets. The town has worked on these sidewalks for many years. Uh, some of my first planning commission discussions in twenty eighteen had to do with sidewalk improvements to downtown. And what we landed on with VDOT was to kind of get our footing under us, do a smaller sidewalk project downtown. Prove our skills and then do a bigger application. So in twenty nineteen, the town applied for the Transportation Alternatives Program with VDOT. Four hundred thousand dollars to build improved sidewalks on Bird Street. VDOT awarded that grant, congratulations. We put that project on hold during the budget shortfall in COVID. And only formally got under contract um, last year, and paid the first part of our match to VDOT to begin design. All of this further community discussion occurred, and VDOT staff provided. A delayed reality check on where this project stands. Construction part uh, costs had gone up so much, um. There were a few limitations to the consultant original scope in this, when VDOT started to look at it, they saw some challenges in utilities in particular. Um, four hundred thousand dollars wasn't gonna be enough to do what they did. And the town under this contract is on the hook for any cost overruns. VDOT pays three hundred and twenty thousand, but if it ends up costing five hundred thousand instead of four hundred thousand, we pay the extra hundred thousand. And that's, that's something that uh, town council has a ton of that to think for. So the guidance from VDOT was perhaps we should step back and reexamine this project. Get it redesigned and scoped more effectively, and then reapply for potentially a larger grant. We also, in the course of this planning discussion at the factory, raised the idea of one way streets in there. Um, that concept appears in our West Downtown Small Area Plan, that. Because of the mass of these buildings turning out from here onto Route twenty has always been challenging and unsafe. So maybe it would be more effective in any development pattern if it was one way in for. The distance from valley, I should, I'm gonna show this. We had this idea in our small area plan of one way traffic coming this way, turning here and one way in. And then if you're leaving that site. Two way, and then you hit this one lane, and you go down and over on West Main, where there's more space for that intersection this way. The VDOT team that I was working with responded really well to that idea. Given more space on the street provides a few different solutions here. You got one travel lane, that gives more space for more clearly marked parking. And it provides a lot more space for a sidewalk or even a bike lane. To squeeze in there and not have to worry about encroaching on private property, encroaching on old facilities. They really wanna avoid moving power lines as a, as a, as a major expense, so working a little bit more in the street. Uh, the one way idea appealed to the VDOT staff as a um. Uh, cost control and just making the project easier. But it is not the design that we apply for. So the advice that they gave to me, that I bring back to planning commission and town council, is um. The checking on the status of this, would we perhaps like to pull the plug on this project? Redesign it with a one way concept in mind, and then reapply for another grant. If we don't do that and we proceed with what we've got, we run a high risk of cost overruns, that would be hard for the town to bear. Um, it's a difficult choice, but the. Construction funding and the grant application that we used in twenty nineteen is fail and doesn't work anymore. And rather than present planning commission and town council with their um, a flawed project that, that breaks our budget. It might be time for a reset, so happy to discuss that further, but I'd um. I'd request a um, recommendation vote line, if you have guidance that you'd like to share with the council.
Um, and. Allowing the traffic study to evaluate where the, which side of the street the sidewalk should go on. Um, yeah, I mean, I would recommend that. At least scrap the project if it's not feasible anymore and.
Does something like this have any kind of public carryment that should have? Any kind of. Engagement with the, the residents in the area or in that?
It's not required, certainly something we could do. It's an important decision, and maybe, maybe fair to ask the neighbors on the street and further reveal what they think. Um, it has a lot of consequence for um, the church congregations um, who have parking issues. For the traffic into the neighborhood, um, your little replays and so on.
Matt, question for you, um. Given. The change that would have been more. Cars versus now it's gonna be more trucks. Is there, does that change the design at all, or is this VDOT looking at it differently now that there's gonna be the industrial park usage?
I think, I think truck radius is gonna be one of the things that we looked at. One of the things that does change in this one way is there's more truck maneuvers, so you'd be asking a truck to turn in. And then coming back out, turn, and then turn, and then turn. So it's more turns.
Well, but the only one way would be Bird, um. West Main would be two ways, so they could turn in that way, there's a little bit more clearance.
Uh, that's right, if you wanted, if you were worried about this turn and totally wanted to avoid it, you come in on West Main, turn at Page and then turn at Page and Bird.
I guess, just to clarify, I'm not asking the, that, that's a different question, the question I'm more asking is. Given. The industrial use, does that change the way that the, the, the actual sidewalks themselves will be designed or understood, would they be? I, cause they, cause width can vary and. It's kind of a plus of mine, it's like sometimes on a busy street, I like, you're gonna turn, so there'll be a sidewalk, but it's a busy street, so it's, I don't know about safety.
It maybe takes a little bit of the pressure off of this project, because the, the industrial users may not care about the sidewalk so much. But on the other hand, you know, we wanted these sidewalks. Before we knew anything about the factory. And if I live in this neighborhood and there's more truck traffic, maybe the sidewalk is more important to me.
Cause, well, I guess more I'm asking, if, if you're still have the houses are gonna be built there at some point, and. You also have people who already use it for various reasons, it's more a question of, again, I'm kind of asking. Is the design gonna be, needs to be different because of the uses has changed, and that, that's more of a question.
The. The biggest thing that raises this energy now is the lack of um, partnership funding. The town's budget situation becomes more pointed with um. The loss of the profits, so doing our sidewalks just within our brand. And redesigning here for cost control becomes more important, where maybe the overrun would never been such a problem if they had outside funding.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think my, my concern with the trucks is if they're coming down Bird. And they're having to make that right onto Harrison. Or even Page if they chose to turn there.
Yeah.
Um. But where we put the sidewalks is important, if we're putting them on the left or the right hand side, and where the crosswalks are and where the library is, and. So that's my concern, but I, I think if, if what we thought about four years ago. You know, five years ago isn't. The best thinking, then scrap it, make sure we don't spend that money on something that. Make sure we continue to earmark that money for sidewalks, but.
The money is, is maybe even gonna be less than what that original proposal was about.
Sure.
Because of the one way and being able to have some room to maneuver.
I would certainly, you know, you, we're. It's, it's very frustrating to explain to the public why. Two hundred yards of sidewalk can't be built with four hundred thousand dollars, but uh, you know, the required engineering inspections, the. Um, fair market wages and American made steel, it, it costs more than building a driveway which has. And when, when the outset says this can't be done for four hundred thousand dollars, I believe them.
Well, I think there's a big an impact to this proposal was put forth. Prior to COVID, and I think we all know that expenses are much higher than they were then. I mean, that's a simple kind of segue there.
And there's going to be grant money available, this is a continuous thing, VDOT, VDOT always has grant money available, so.
Yes, they're, they're welcoming and encouraging us to um, reapply. They've, they've gotten into these scenarios before where the, the locality marches on with an old plan. Then they get hit with the cost overrun, and it leaves a very bad taste. Between the community and VDOT blaming each other about, why didn't you understand how this was gonna work? And they really wanna avoid that, and they, their strong caution was that that's where we're headed, and we should um, we should go out, and we think it.
I don't know, I'm kind of, one of my thoughts, and you know me, I'm gonna ask this question, but. Um, if. If we decide that a one way street system is gonna be the best for the channel. And putting in sidewalks and so on and so forth. Is it really our problem to change what's going on there? If it's gonna impact the industrial uses on our street?
I could see the one way conversion maybe being a maintenance issue. We, we could, we could possibly go a route of requesting the one way. And you could make a one way street with just paint and some plastic posts. If we're not building sidewalk at all and we just do the one way on the parking, the churches get better parking, the traffic pattern is clearer. And maybe it doesn't cost us anything, VDOT could throw that as a main, so she.
Right.
Maybe we get through the exercise and we realize that church parking is actually more important than a sidewalk, and we don't. Have a hundred thousand dollars worth of matching interest in that.
Cause I think there are some pluses to that, and, and a good thing that we're talking about it. If the number of people is less than what we.
That's last name.
Okay. I just don't know what the residents think about a one way situation. I know that I would be thinking about that.
Yeah.
And how that affected me and my travel and my flow and all of that.
One of the things that came to my mind that I shared to the. Uh one of the things that came to my mind that I shared to the VDOT staff was. This might not work as as just a Bird Street thing, it might also need to be a Harrison Street thing, but if you're if you're going, if you. If you live here and you're going north. It's going to be tempting to get on the Harrison Street, this is one way, you either go side street here. Or side street here and you skip Valley Street and so the Harrison Street might see a serious traffic increase.
Yeah. Well, not if there's not two hundred apartments there, I don't think the traffic will be that much, but can VDOT give us like. Models of what that would look like?
The first the first step in this um project would be. A monotied version of the traffic study that we saw with the apartments, um here's the here's the computer model of how the traffic flows and it's. It's sort of like capillaries in your body, it it'll spread out a certain way and so they see this growth and would model. What the intersection impacts are going to be.
Mm-hmm.
And uh they can do the one-way change and tell us where that's going to flow. And that did the first part of our decision.
I do want to mention that any kind of increase in the population in the area, including East. East Village.
Yeah.
Um. Adds to that flow as well, I know when I go down to um Baynes and I park. On this side of twenty. I will sometimes come up into the neighborhood to skip back to mine or to. Go down to change your road to go across and and up to um Charlottesville, so I add that. Um flow, even though I do not live in this district.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so I I think that, yes, we wouldn't have the two hundred apartments, but the thirty-six homes and the. You know, East Village and whatever happens with all of the other pieces of land that they are going to be developing, you know, it all makes sense.
Yeah, well, that's, I mean, that's a great point, we're not planning for thirty-six homes or two hundred apartments and thirty-six homes we're planning for. And can you give us that number again, what's the buy rate, would it be forty-five to fifty? And then how many are in Mill Creek Estates subdivided link divided no?
Houston, Mill Creek, I thought.
Sorry, twenty-eight?
It's a it's a precise pipeline by right and no, you know, no telling how quickly those will be built, but they're not going to go away.
Well, I think it's a good thing to recommend to the council to. Just remember, I just want them to know.
Yeah.
Whether people in the town have a chance to stay, what they thought about that.
What's your, what's your question, would you like to leave that for um? Next month and invite some of the neighbors or are you comfortable with moving something?
No, I mean, if it's not required, I'm not going to say, oh, I think they should have their their say, I don't know what the town council. Process would be either, you know, that's something that they're looking to. I mean, we're in the hypothetical area, right, and like that was just something I thought about.
No, it's fair.
Um, did you happen to speak to Claire Moon, was it about? Um when Harrison was a one-way?
She meant she.
I was just going to bring that up.
Yeah, um Cl- Claire Mello lives on Harrison Street and had mentioned to me. In passing at one point that Harrison used to be one-way. Um and I have not spoken to her to hear that story, but I um I will do that.
Uh. She said it didn't work, I remember talking to her about it and she she was very adamant that it. It didn't work for whatever reason.
Yeah.
Can can I go to the public, does anyone here remember that and want to speak to it?
Oh, good. It didn't work because uh residents couldn't park. Yeah, you know, like they couldn't come home and park without turning around again.
Right.
And it's just difficult and if you're going to impact three churches, you need a public hearing.
Yeah.
I just, I I I know for a fact, St. John's, the the population of the Presbyterian Church is. Nearly really old, they're in a difficult times parking anyway. And we already have restrictions, half of Third Street going up already. You have sidewalk on the left side, so the sidewalk side is already pretty much determined, all the way up to Harrison, you have sidewalk already in place. You don't have to replace that if you do sidewalk. But Harrison Street was a gash, I mean, the parade used to come down Harrison Street when I was young, I lived on Harrison Street. Or current all of us do that.
Wow, the parade, oh wow.
Parade came down Harrison.
Mister, Mister Holt. Yes.
Her first book in public here. It was actually something that was actually involved in too. And she said the major problem was coming down Harrison and hitting Warren. And everyone would then go right. And now Valley Street was plugged up even worse, so you had people backed up from Harrison Street and Warren. Going out to Valley instead of going up Warren. So that's the problem, Warren Street is not a one-way either, size of Warren Street. Three exchange already, but that's what she said the problem was. When you went down there, you were standing there forever trying to get.
And that's a bad intersection too, yeah.
And her point was like, you know, fixing one little section of the whole network isn't the ideology.
Right.
And I will point out too, they're talking about VDOT. Um not knowing what to use or change from utilities, the problem with the both. Bird and Pages, you have telephone poles literally just about an inch deep.
Well, in Harrison.
Talking about, if you take a tractor trailer and you try to make a right-hand turn in front of that library, you've got a few pitches.
Right.
And it's just, there's not explaining areas, the reason you can do it on twenty, if it's a bird. It's a tractor trailer, you go all the way over to the right.
Right.
And then make it over, do a short turn, usually hit the grass. And that sign on the corner, this I'm probably got picked, but not 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 the the little bobcat bobpass. But that literally rocks that sign, you don't have the train break in this, I mean, all of those corners, if you go down by the. The uh the the school there, you've got, you've got a rock wall. And that's not flexible at all, then you're back into the ditch on the other side. Streets are trying to find, we never did that, you know, we put a levee in the way of the railroad, which was a great deal, there's nothing wrong with that. But that then, the those streets you never did want to contract colors. They're making a left and then a right, and I think it's just kind of silly if you're not. If the cost is really cheap, moving telephone poles, we're going to have to move minimal to possibly through. Um so I don't see what. Everything is definitely. What do you do once you go, put it on the one-way and now you just have no street at all and go to Valley?
Yeah.
Also here, but.
That VDOT did a study on that while the factory was still in business about that intersection of the library. They've already addressed that once before and it's pretty costly when you get there, both of those terms. Talking about and you're going to be going in this sort of property to make sure.
Do you have, do you have access to that study? Do you, do you know approximately when that, I mean, that was a long time ago, I don't know, maybe VDOT.
Oh, but you know, it was toward the end of the factory, but it was when everybody was complaining about trucks and they brought trucks in. At night and the special driver stopped, dropped the trailers over at Spanglers.
I just wonder if that would be really useful, that stud, having that today because it was actually looking at truck traffic, because that's what we're going to have.
Throw traffic back into Valley Street with a three-way intersection, I would do. It's just, you're going to end up at the stop sign.
Yeah, I definitely agree that we shouldn't do anything on this until we get a a lot of public input. Um, I was definitely intrigued by the one-way, but um. I think we need a a public hearing before we do anything on that. But in the meantime, I would say. If we're not a hundred percent sure about those sidewalks, then maybe we should just step out of that grant. For the time being, that would be my advice.
And I like the idea that we can hand group the. The parking and how it is right now, um you know, until things get. We don't have to be married, but I guess. I mean, I like the idea that we have options.
I think we need more of a study, we need more more information about where those cars are going to come out and. I don't know how they would model that because there's there's definitely going to be that pinch point, you're definitely going to be getting people going down Harrison.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes?
Then the one difficulty too is your full spectrum. You don't know what that traffic is going to be like because we don't know what the factory is going to be like, we don't know what. The entire tree is going to be, you know, thirty-six homes, so you can do a study now and that's what we saw in the last study. They say, well, no one comes down that street. And you can comment um Shannon as well, everyone knows to avoid it. You know, because you can't make that turn, so unfortunately, any kind of study would be speculative. And yes, you have to do that, that an engineer and you do all sorts of projections and everything else, we also. You don't know what's going to be for them, that's going to be a tough problem.
Well, I mean, I'd like them to model it with. Like full growth. If they can give us a model with, I don't know, two hundred apartments and then a model with. A total of three hundred and twenty-ish. Two hundred being the tire factory, not that that's going to happen, but. Um, because, I mean, good point, just because you don't live on Harrison or Page, you're still or Bird. When you need to turn around to go back home, you're going up that street or you go through the town parking lot or you're going.
I would feel weird doing that, but it's really one of the only, oh, it's pretty safe way to get around, turn yourself around.
Because either that or you're going all around to Alavana and, you know.
Um, do you, do you see any level of support for pushing through with an old design that's going to be over budget?
No. Especially knowing that they're not going to frown upon us. Bowing out now and coming back, it's not like they're going to say, well, you didn't use the money we offered you the first go-around, so you're going to the bottom of the list or or anything like that, that's not going to happen. They're the ones who recommended it's probably a good idea to to not move forward at this point in time. And there's no sense in continuing to do something that we have doubts about.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have no problem recommending that, but you know, when you get into plans going forward, that's where we need to play.
Okay.
Okay, does that, that sounds good for you?
That's good guidance, thank you. Yeah, it's um. It's hard to, hard to admit that one of these is uh. Not going to work out the way it was planned years ago, but uh time passes by.
Are they making moves now to turn the factory into um? An industrial park, is that actually happening? Or are we just assuming it will happen?
I don't have anything to panic in the last, it's it's only been a couple of weeks.
Okay, okay.
Sorry.
I just didn't know we were kind of talking about it like it was a done deal.
You know, these guys are talking that way, I I didn't say that.
Well, I still mentioned two hundred apartments, I'm I'm trying to plan for all contingencies, just because who knows what will happen in a few years, we just. We need to plan.
Well, I think you both made affirmative statements about industrial park, but we'll see, maybe we can talk about it.
Yeah, I plan, I plan for the current law. It's, it's all I can do.
Yeah. Okay, February, we wanted to do a special meeting in February, what does everyone's schedule look like? How about two weeks? We'd have to do it on a different night though, right?
The town, town council is Tuesday, the twenty-first, but uh. It may be the Thursday.
That's fine for me.
Thursday for what?
Twenty-third.
With a, yeah, with a focus on um progress on the comprehensive plan.
I'm open.
Thank you.
And I I think I recall hearing um someone like seven P M, was that? What, what's everyone's vote?
Something to say and that worked best for him, is that right, Matthew?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
I am not free on the twenty-third.
Oh, okay. Next choice? Matt, what nights do you prefer?
Um our our only commitment, we have a holiday Monday, the twentieth, and council on Tuesday, the twenty-first, if the rest of the month is open, that's our last one, public meeting of the month.
What about the following week?
Yeah, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, those are fine.
We, can we stick to a Tuesday or a Thursday over the following week? Okay, that'll give me a chance to work out on Monday and Wednesday.
Twenty, Tuesday, twenty-eighth.
I want that too.
I'm sorry, what was that date?
The Tuesday, the twenty-eighth.
Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, sounds good.
Okay.
Seven P M and then our regular March first Monday.
Yeah.
That'll work.
Yeah, on the, on the twenty-eighth, I'll be able to give you a heads up of, you know, anything that I perceive. Because normally your agenda would come out just a couple of days after that, so I'll.
There you go, that sounds perfect. Also, um commissioners, I gave you this um. Document, it'll be with your packet and actually I could email it to you, it's four, six pages. Eight pages, um it's called The Secrets of Successful Small Communities. It's an article that um Commissioner Heisen gave me, I'm sorry, Councilor Heisen gave me, and it's about. Planning for small communities and um. We even talks about having a vision for the future, inventory of assets, having strong leaders and committed citizens. So I thought this would be helpful as we start embarking on the um plan. And I could email it out to anyone who's interested. And that's all I got, anything else?
Sure, could I ask, um if you guys had a voice on approval agenda, could I get one on the ones itself?
Oh, we didn't do that?
Yeah, so I just did it as I had one, make them be kind of hot, uh pass I have two and three. Make it clearer in a minute.
Yes, absolutely, okay, so minutes from June sixth and December fifth. I have motioned.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from December and January.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we have enough votes? I just heard two.
Oh.
Okay, thank you, motion passes, thank you, thanks Javier. Okay, do we have a meeting adjournment motion?
I motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, thank you very much.